Welcome, everybody. It is Tuesday, July 13th at 7 o'clock. We are in school. Brenda Brigenti for getting us all on one computer. Do not have your phones in. Betsy, I hope you've noticed the quick change that we did from last time seeing us. We are, according to virtual meeting room, sorry, virtual meeting room for Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, section 20. This is virtually via Zoom and in person at the high school library. Pursuant to MGL 30C, sorry, MGLC 30A, section 20, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio report has been made at this meeting. I'd like to invite everybody to join me for the flag of allegiance. Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission statement of the public schools is to ensure students have the opportunity to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can you do a roll call for us? Mr. Robin?
Here.
Mr. Kenneth?
Here.
Ms. Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Larmen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Here.
Thank you. All right, first thing on our agenda is approval of the June, the Lee School Committee meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the June 15th Lee School Committee minutes.
A second.
Any discussion? All right, Brenda, can we take a roll call, please? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
All right, and next on our agenda is approval of the June 23rd School Committee minutes. I make a motion, we accept the June 23rd, 2021 School Committee minutes.
Okay.
Any discussion? All right, we have a roll call. May I please just confirm for a second? Who seconded the motion?
I will.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
All right, and next up on our agenda is public input. Randy, you are up.
Members of the public are invited to address the committee at this time. Issues raised will refer to the administration or a subcommittee of the school. So, do we have anybody out there?
Oh, yes.
I'll give the public input. I see one person standing up there. Hey, Kathy?
Okay, hello, everybody. And this is just for the purpose of community outreach, keeping us all informed of the little things and big things happening in our town. From the Lee Library Newsletter, Lee Earns a Living is an exhibit from the Lee Historical Society during July in the J. Peter Scaforo Gallery at the library. The exhibit is an attempt to trace the development of the local economy. The exhibit will include full business listings for the following three years, 1860, 1934, and 2021. Also, free passes to local museums are available at the library, first come, first served. From the Lee Chamber of Commerce Newsletter, the next community cleanup event is July 31st, starting at 9:00 a.m. at the gazebo. The rain day is August 1st, 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Save the dates for the Lee Founders Weekend, September 17th, 18th, and 19th. From the Lee Youth Commission, because of the incessant rain, the spreading of mulch and other tasks at the Lee Athletic Field have been postponed until further notice. However, the playground equipment has been ordered and is expected to be delivered the first part of September. Also, the Lee Youth Commission is moving forward with the market analysis and the financial feasibility study for the community center. Thank you to the town reps and the town for the allocation of $20,000 for these studies. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kathy.
Anybody else out in the community?
Okay, that's it. Well, thank you, everybody. Okay, I don't see that we have a student representative this month, so I don't think we have a student representative for this month. So, moving to the next thing is the chair report, which is me. So, if you guys would like to turn to section two of your binders, I have created a list of our current school committee subcommittees that we have. And what I was hoping you could do is just talk a little bit about each subcommittee so that next month, when we have our restructuring meeting, you all are prepared to volunteer for numerous, and when I say numerous, I mean lots, guys, lots, of committees. So, I'm hoping that Andrea Wadsworth is going to help me give good descriptions of what each of these committees are, because I only know the ones that I'm on and what they are. So, the curriculum committee, I am on the curriculum committee, but we have never met, because it got started and then COVID happened, so it never, it never met. But I think the point of the curriculum committee was to vote at, correct me if I'm wrong, correct, you might know the answer to this question, was the point of the curriculum committee to look at the curriculum, and you might have to look at the curriculum data as well, you know? Yes?
And any specific issues that are brought to you from administration or referred by the committee through public comment, things like that, curriculum-related discussions, decisions, reviews?
Okay.
I think the big thing would be review.
Right, because we don't oversee the curriculum. Right, right. And so, would we also, are we looking at alignment too, so that we make sure that each grade is lining correctly and/or else we're looking at alignment outside of our school district, maybe with other school districts?
Well, you'd be looking at a curricular alignment with the state standards.
Right. Which is huge in itself. Big, big project. There. Yeah, big project. Would the goal of this committee, this school committee, to be able to align at least some form of curriculum with the other schools near us? The thought is, if students move from one school to another, and if the curriculum isn't aligned, either they're ahead or behind. Right. And if we start working forward-thinking and setting up strategic ways that our curriculum works, we could actually partner with other districts, not to join, but to say, hey, our teachers have a professional development day, do we want to start talking about maybe supporting financially, because we hold the budget. Right. Ways for them to have a curriculum change that they need into. So, I think there's a big thing there. Okay. Thank you all for contributing. That's probably why I never. It never will. It's probably like a whole year, just to get like. Yeah. The next one is the finance committee. So, Randy and Erin are currently on the finance committee, so I will let you guys talk about what they're doing right now.
Yeah, so overall, the finance committee is looking at the warrants that come in, which are payables and payroll, looking at the budget, helping the superintendent through the process of budgeting for the following year, and any other expenditures that come up during the course of the year. And we'll go over that a little bit today, because there's some grant opportunities for the Lee community, the Lee School community to get into and talk about those. It's a subcommittee, so it, you know, approves warrants, but it's not a final approval issue until the whole school committee approves.
The negotiations committee is a committee of me and Andrea. Right now, it's a committee of two. It really should be more than a committee of two. Yeah, it should be more than a committee of two. And so, what we have done recently have been, have been negotiations with unions around the primary and subcommittee, but we also negotiate contracts with the teachers, with the professionals, with the secretaries slash administrative assistants, those kind of things. And so, that's sort of what the negotiations does. And so, that's also a subcommittee, but as I said right now, it's just. Yeah, and every three years, it has a very heavy lift, because we negotiate all contracts. We sync them up together, so there's no phasing in, so every contract we use at the same time. And we're geared up for that. This year, we should. Yes. So, it needs to be done more than just two of us. Yeah. The next committee is the policy committee, which is also just Andrea and I right now. And so, what we do is we create policy for the school, so we don't, we don't, we create it and then the building, buildings put it in place and make sure that it's enacted. So, like last year, we created the mask policy and the hand washing policy and the social distancing policy, and then we brought it to the whole committee and it got approved that the building principals and staff in the building were responsible for putting it in place. So, we create it, and then the building people put it in place. Shared services, I'm going to let Andrea know. So, this one may be outdated. This, this committee was very much involved with conversations with other school districts about sharing services. It started when we were looking at sharing a superintendent. We do have a shared food service director, so with Leah Lennox, there's a contract that gets renewed every year, I assume it got renewed this year. Okay, good. We hate to lose our food service, you're right. Kids hate, so I'm assuming.
Yeah.
So, our due diligence here to make sure we represent Lee's interests. If it's still working, we should be reviewing that. I don't know if that's an interest of the committee now, if it stands for collaboration with the district, so it may be something we just keep for, because we have one shared service, or it, you know, deferred to the committee, if they want to keep this as a priority, which it has been and then has shifted. Okay. Thank you. And then the next committee is the Strategic Long Range Planning Committee, which has a new arm.
It's pretty self-explanatory. It's, you know, it's led by Superintendent Verschauer in bringing people in the community into the process and breaking out of the subgroups. We're in the middle of this strategic plan right now, had a few hiccups because of all everything that's going on, but the plan is to get back on to the full plan and get consensus in certain areas.
The technology committee. So, years ago. Years ago, we, that was bad. I wish it worked again. Yes, and it went for a while, and Greg really was huge in this integral part. We went from 22 on-prem servers to what, two now?
One now.
One. So, we went cloud-based, it's really interesting. I would think, I don't know, I guess we defer to administration if they want to keep this, but as obviously tech changes. We probably should have someone like looking at it, touching base, maybe not every month, but every six months, like four months, something like that. And I know one of the things that Mike had brought up, I think when we did the budget round, was that some of the technology is going to be replaced coming up over the next couple of years, so that's probably something we should have a cycle. Yeah, and actually, that's tied to budget. Right, so that inventory should be tied to replenishment. Yeah. On the revenue fee line. Yeah. And then we have the Union 29, so, well, that's my statute. Yeah. Which, we didn't know that again, which we are, so there's that. And then we also have the other, I didn't know what to call the one that we created, so I don't, I don't know what you want to call it. This is what I called it, but I don't, you guys, it's the three of us, but I didn't know what you wanted to call it. So, I called it the lead tearing hand, Union 29. I like that, but it's really a working. But, yeah, but it can be a committee. I would hope it goes away at some point, so it's not a standing committee. Okay, so, so that's a working group. So, I added that one in there, that's the three of us working on there. And then the proposed new committee that Andrea Wadsworth has proposed, and I think I left the word out of this, is diversity, equity, and inclusion, which we will need to vote in when we do our subcommittee next, next month, and could you talk a little bit about that? Sure, you know, I don't want it to be like a buzzword, but I believe, I would hope that this committee would want to start supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion on all levels, and, you know, race, gender, ethnicity. And so, if we start looking at our decisions that we make and our conversations that we have, we can start looking through that lens, and so that we create a safe environment, not that we isn't, but we start fostering that. And there is a professional development, I really advocated for that wonderful woman, and she's great, and I just think we should start talking about diversity. I assume they're doing that in the schools. Yeah. Okay, so those are the subcommittees that we have right now. So, you've got a whole month. So, I want you to spend all of your waking hours thinking about the 95 subcommittees that you all want to volunteer for when we talk about this next month. So, when you come in here, super excited in August, I want you to be like, these are the committees I want to be on. Yes. I didn't know if you wanted to go over exactly what Union 29. I was, I was just going to. Yeah. So, Union 29 is the committee that hires the superintendent, hires the business administrator, hires the. To support. Huh? To support. I was going to just say, also hires Brenda. Well, there's, there's a payroll person capped out, this county person. He's reaching out. Yeah, yeah. And I feel like I missed something. Kathy reduced some. Kathy reduced some. The payroll person, the business administrator. With the superintendent and, yeah. Those two, those five. Yes. Yes, all of them. Yes. And so, that's what that. And by statute and by our policy, so statute is the measure and the law which we adopt through our policies. It is the chair of the school committee that sits on it, and then two voted members from this board. Right. And then we add an alternate, just in case there's a conflict with one of those other members for voting. And then the other side of it is the chairing board, which has three members also, but they only have three members. So, they're all by default in that, in that, so it's a group of six. There's no break. And there's no agreement that we can find so far. Right, yeah. Which is why we have our working group. Yeah, okay. So, does anybody have any questions on the subcommittees?
The only thing I want to say is I'm, I'm actually going to be on vacation next month, so I won't be here.
Unacceptable.
I know.
By default, you get. Every one of the.
I'm not zooming in either.
Yeah.
But I, I.
You will email me ahead of time what subcommittees you would like to be on?
I'm just going to tell you right now.
Oh.
I'll do them all, but I can't do finance or negotiations.
Right.
I have a conflict.
You do have a conflict.
With a family member in the school.
Correct.
So, I will happily sit on the rest. I just can't do finance negotiations or any committee where I vote on a financial item of an employee.
Appreciate it. I'm not doing that.
What, don't you have free time?
But I know it's when they are at school, I'm excited about it. Yeah. But not that much. I appreciate it.
I'll, I'll be available to the committee wherever, whenever, wherever I need to sit, I'm fine sitting, I'm happy to sit on them, just those I can do.
I really appreciate it. So, okay. Okay. Thank you, Andrea, and to the gallery in the back for helping us out. And with that, I'm going back to my agenda to see what we have next. Next, we have our principal and director's reports, because our superintendent's not here, because he is off at the superintendent's conference. So, our first report from Tim Mertnuck, the new elementary principal. Welcome, Tim. Congratulations on your first meeting.
Thank you much. Thank you much. I just want to say this week marks my second full week as principal of LES, and I'm thrilled to be standing here representing that, that school. I'm also happy to report that the summer programming is well underway. We're serving about 52 kids in grades K through six, including enrichment at every grade level with the expressive arts program. Social media outreach at LES is expanding, includes an updated Facebook page, Twitter presence, and the LES section of the public school should be updated soon as well. In the coming weeks, I hope to begin the process of starting a school council at LES. I expect to see some outreach there through the social media platforms as well, and we are hard at work preparing for this fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, we have Brenda Brigenti in the middle of high school.
That's the top. So, very briefly here as well, since it is summertime, we also are in the second of four weeks of summer school right now. Similarly to the elementary school, we have roughly 50 students here this summer taking classes for credit recovery, mostly for credit recovery type courses. That is greatly expanded summer school, thankfully, thanks to the grants that were available and thanks to, and due to the need of the pandemic from, you know, the past 15 months. So, that is excellent that we're able to do that, and thankful for the teachers who were willing to give up half of their summer to help those students along. Everything is going well in the building, getting ready for the fall. Custodians are working hard to get things in shape and ready for the fall, and including taking up all sorts of stickers all over the place from the last year. And you might have mentioned, might have mentioned, you might have noticed if you're driving by, you probably didn't, but you might have just, on the corner of your eye, noticed that the flagpole was now bright white. It was recently sandblasted and repainted, it was in pretty rough shape for a while out there. That is the original 1965 flagpole.
Wow.
From when the building was first built, so, and it was in, first time it was ever really refurbished, so that's out there, and we now have the ability for the first time in about 20 years to fly the Massachusetts flag as well. So, one of a few little projects going on this summer, others will be coming, so that's about all.
And there's new flags.
There are new flags.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, next, we have special education with Jen Norton.
Hi. Very similar to Mr. Mertnuck and Mr. Brigenti, we are in the middle of our summer programming. Our summer programming for special education does go a little bit longer for some of our students, so the majority of our students get services for four weeks, but then there's a handful that will get them for an additional fifth week, whether it's on campus or some off-campus services that we have. I will be with Mrs. Larmen next week at the Western Mass Special Education Conference, so I'm very excited about that. My mother will be coming with me, so she's very excited about that. And, you know, it's been great, I've been working with Mr. Mertnuck a little bit, he's in the office next door to me, just kind of getting some new staff in. I've hired quite a few new paraprofessionals, some returning staff, I have a couple of open positions, so if there's anybody looking for that, please look at our website, we have a couple of open spots. And aside from that, we're waiting for the new grants to come out, and we'll start on that process. Circuit Breaker was turned in a couple of weeks ago, so we should get some answers from the state as far as what we will be reimbursed for that in the FY22 school year very soon. They had one question for me, but it ended up not being something on our side, so it was very good. And that's about it, unless there's any questions for me, and that's our special education update.
Did we have any extraordinary relief?
Oh, no, not even close.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
And I don't see Jordan in the audience anywhere, so I don't think we have a facilities.
No, he was not able to make it.
Okay, thanks, great. All right, so next up on our agenda is committee reports, so we have our finance committee.
A lengthy report we have. So, the first, first order of this, we have two warrants to approve. The first warrant that the subcommittee approved was the accounts payable for $177,944.90. So, I entertain a, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the one?
Sure, I make a motion to approve the warrant as read.
I have a second.
Any discussion?
Does this include payroll? That will be the next one.
Okay. Any second. All right, Brenda, can you do a roll call for? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
All right, the second warrant, as Kurt mentioned, is the payroll warrant, which is in the, which was approved by the finance subcommittee, of $71,198.97.
Anybody like to make a motion for that? I'm happy to make a motion as read, noting that the value of that warrant is low because of summertime.
Yeah. Well, and also, because last month it was, it was high, it was over the normal, it was a timing issue.
Yeah.
Because of our meeting was later than normal last month.
But we also, do we pay?
Paying teachers.
We're not paying teachers during the summer.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any special?
I'm going to refrain from voting.
That's okay.
On this issue because of the conflict.
Yeah, okay. Roll call. Please, Brenda. Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Refrain.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
All right, so the next thing was talked about was the special education stabilization account. It was proposed and passed at the end of town of Lee meeting to put $125,000 to the special education stabilization account beginning in FY22, and with the expectation that another $125,000 would be added to FY23. The cap amount is $250,000. The purpose of this account is the school has some extraordinary costs relative to special education. There would not be a need to call a special town meeting in order to add money to our budget to support those costs. The Lee, the Lee School Committee needs to vote to accept these monies to be able to access this account, so.
I would like to make a motion that we discuss this topic. Okay. I just need a second to discuss it.
Yep.
I need someone to do the second. So, I'm just going to start with this. I found this so distasteful that this was brought to the town reps before it was brought to a school committee. There is statute on how this is supposed to go. Our administrator should have known that, our town administrator should have known that. We have literally done this backwards. I've reached out to the state about it. While I think the premise is lovely, it should have been something that came from this board as a request. Judiciary is our responsibility, and I would ask this board what our balance is in our special education revolving fund and our school choice, because I'm pretty sure I know what those numbers are, and we have just asked the town of Lee and the residents to give us another $125,000 of money we do not need. And I, and this lays solely on however it got to, however this started. This is a discussion that should have happened at school committee level during budget time. There should have been a vote. We should have gone to the select board, asked them to discuss it, there should have been a vote, and it should have gotten put out of warrants. None of those things happened.
Without Mike being here today, it's hard for me to speak at his behalf and how this came about, that this was presented by Mike at the subcommittee, so.
Yeah, because he has to now. It's now been voted in by the townspeople, and it's in their tax base. There is ripple effects to asking for money, and I'm telling you, we have over, and I don't even want to say it publicly, but $1.4 million we're sitting on. How dare we, as a school committee, ask for something like that? So, I'm wondering if we need to put this, if we need to table this. Well, I think the problem is cheese out of the bottle, right? Right. And we're just very fortunate that we're in the middle of a pandemic and no one's looking at our finances, but someone will, and that stuff like that, it's like, you know, we got our budget through without anyone knowing it was on the budget, and that's not how we normally do that, and this will come back to us as a school committee next time, when everything goes back to normal and people start looking at why we want a three percent increase. And I just think it was very, it was poor planning, and if there was, no one had the right to ask for it except this election. And if there was no one had the right to ask for it except this elected board. Sorry. And again, you all can make a motion to accept this. You're accepting a stabilization fund. That is not what was put forward to the taxpayers of Lee. It was called the Special Education Reserve. So the language is even wrong. I stood at the town meeting and made a comment about that. It, none of my questions were answered. And as a school committee member, it was distasteful to have to stand up as a town rep and ask about something we did not know about.
So how would you like to proceed?
I don't know how you proceed. I think we need legal counsel to ask to proceed. I mean, unless we're, unless this group would like, so by taking this fund and endorsing this fund, which you can as a group, you're doing it backwards.
Well, we, we can, you know, there's no you here. It's we.
Well, I, so yes, but I am not going to vote for this. I think, you know, I think the people who we pay to manage our school district should have known better than to do this. I also think that, because that's the executive side, I think the town's executive side should have known better. And if anything, I hope they just weren't reversed. That's, I'm giving good intentions, I'm hoping. But how do you say we don't want to take a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for special education students? The problem with this is when you ask for this money, you also have parameters put in place. How is the money asked for? What is the vote? When do you go to the town meeting? When do you go to the selectmen to ask to release it? How do you protect the identity of the student? So if someone moves into our town and they have substantial cost, let's say half a million. Everyone's going to know who that person is. So it's our job as school committee members to make sure we have those reserves so that we can mitigate that. We could actually take in three students. It would wipe us out, but we have worked very hard over the years to make sure those accounts are where they are. This, this feels like a money grab for me and I just, I didn't, I, I mean, it's just not good practice for us. And I'm, I'm sorry, it happened. I, you know, I asked Mike about it and he said, we discuss it during budgets? I don't remember that. So maybe that's on me for not asking back that. I don't know. Do you remember it for budget time?
I don't.
So I guess, so this, I asked you to vote to discuss this. So I'll stop talking and you guys can tell me what you're.
Well, I think, I think that if, if we, if we need to have, we need to see legal information to find out whether we need to change the title of, of the account. Or.
Yeah.
Or do we need to set like parameters around how the access to the account happens and that needs to happen.
I, I think you're going to find the statute dictates how it even gets created and we didn't do it that way. It's a vote of the boards. And then it gets brought to the town. And I even asked why it went that way. And then there were some, the comment was, we weren't sure what came first. But one called to Desi and I was given the information of what came first. So it's, it wasn't hard to find out. Again, it's a great thing and I don't want to take it away. I don't want it to be an issue of, you know, Andrea Watson, for the month, special education people that money. But we have worked hard to truly cover our special education schemes because of the reserves we've spent years collecting and hoarding and going without. Right, Greg? Unless you guys have spent the reserves.
Oh, no.
I haven't seen it in a while.
Spent those without you guys.
Right. Yes. That's the thing. We approve all money. Yeah. Asking and sending.
So do we have, so I guess my question is, does this have to be approved or can we table the approval while we seek further information?
I think we should table the approval, the acceptance, because it's been approved at town meeting. The money is now earmarked in the.
Table the acceptance while we seek further information.
And we, we ask for legal counsel to weigh in. And I also think this should be something that gets noted somewhere about process. Because this entire board, which is an elected board with inherent authority, was circum- circumvented to do something that honestly has a lot of political weight to it. Stabilization funds are very serious funds to act.
Okay. So I think we need a mo-, so I think what I'm hearing is we need a motion to table this while we seek to vote. I make a motion, we table this and go and see. All right, any discussion?
Sorry, Randy. I didn't know you were going to be reading that. I didn't know you were going to be reading.
As far as the discussion goes, we have, I think it's.
At this point, it's any further discussion.
I think it's important to, that we also identify how this money came. We're, we're talking about this money just came from, you know, the budget. Or if, you know, I, I want to know the full story about where this money's come from.
Well, it's coming from your tax base.
Well, I understand from our tax base, it's a public school, I get that.
No, no, it's separate. It's, it's hold on that. So we, it's held on the town side. So that's also interesting. As a school committee member, you have autonomy from the town because of, we operate under completely different laws than the, than the municipality side. And so we're actually like our own little thing inside of the town budget. So like selectmen can't weigh in on our money, right? We get appropriated one million, you know, the nine million dollar number of me decide how that's spent. So doing this, we have now put the money on the other side of the books, which is the town side. That's awesome. That is good for them. They maybe have some extra money, free cash that they want to set aside. Great. But now we have to ask them to use it if we have a special education issue. Well, right now, yeah, the special education director could come right to us and we can authorize.
Yes, so the one point four comes into play where we have to find to put somebody where they need to be.
And we don't say it that much because, you know, people might, people might have a problem with us having that kind of funds. But there's a reason why we have those funds and it's taken years. There were sometimes we only had three hundred thousand. And yes, that would have been an issue, but we have struggled and not bought pencils for teachers, you know, that, not that we haven't done that. But we hoarded funds so that we never had to be in that position to take something like that from the town side. And I just don't know when that message changed.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, we have one point four billion dollars so we can protect the identity of people that require services from our district. So if we were able to say have this money that the town has, and maybe we can go ahead and buy the pencils for teachers and the students. And we can do fun things like maybe pay for school lunch and stuff like that. And we've done this past year through, like whatever. Instead of going without trying to build up this money, we have money set aside through the town as long as we can access those funds and still protect the identity of the people that are going to be requiring us to spend that money on them. And I'm confident if we only have, if it's kept at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if we need more than that, we can always go to the town. We can always ask for more money for, you know, I think it's like a emergency fund transfer. There's, it is, it's, it's doable. It's very, very doable.
Yes, but this particular one, stabilization accounts have their own master law and there is a max of it.
Right, but I'm saying if we need more money to spend for people that are in our district that require services, we can get that money from the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think the reason it got created is a couple of town, a couple of towns in Mercer County didn't have situation, did not have funds.
Set aside.
Set aside and had students move into their districts that cost them a significant amount of money. And they had to go to their towns for money and, and it was not pretty.
You can check the dots. We have to do.
Correct. It was not pretty. It became very contentious. Families were made to feel very unwelcome. They were made to feel like they were huge threats on the town, et cetera, et cetera. So I think the intention in creating this was that.
We can protect the identity of.
So you can't right now protect the identity because no one has given us the scope of how this is going to work.
So we're going to do the intention when it was created with. Was that, I don't.
Right, but the intent and great, but they didn't do it that way.
Correct.
Right?
And the intention was good when it was created was that, was to do that so that we didn't have a situation like the other towns had.
So a couple, like, just clearing that up though. So there was towns that did not have stabilization accounts. And then they still had to pay for students because it's, you have to, right? It's long. So regardless if they're happy or not, they have to do it. So this stabilization would be in place. You still, we still have to go to the town passport. There, it's not like a big secret thing. So we have to go to a public meeting all together, discuss the need for this. And if it's one new student that moved into the district and we're talking about that need, it's not hard for people to figure it out. We have avoided that for years because we always did it on our side of the house. So I, I appreciate the thought of it. I just wish it was done the correct way, the way the law states it should be done.
And I think the idea was with the others, with the other town, the money wasn't even there.
Right. See, there's my problem.
That was, the money wasn't even there. So even when they went to the town and asked for the money, the money wasn't there. So there wasn't even a stabilization fund there to ask for the money from. So, so they went to these towns and said, we need three hundred thousand dollars.
We have a student.
Resident program. And the school and the town was like, we don't have it.
Right.
We can't give you what we don't have. And so it became this, it like, it just blew up. And so the thought process was if we put this money here, if this ever happens, it's not going to be that we don't have it. It's going to be, it's there.
And again, I, I like the idea of stabilization fund. I think it shouldn't have been done correctly.
The process was wrong.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
That's what, yeah, that's what I need to understand. A lot of people are moving forward because I feel like there's some confusion around that. I mean, there's no one that wants special education fund more than me. Trust me with that. I, I just feel confused, I guess, how this all seems to be and what it means.
Well, and about three years ago, we had to increase this bed line hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And we have a public meeting and people were there and they stood up and said, well, why are you doing that? And that's our budget. We know it, right? Because we have a student head.
Right.
Well, if you don't spend it, you're going to get your money back. No, you're not getting your money back. This is money we're asking for. We're spending it on the child. Now, if next year those services aren't given, you'll see a deficit in that one. And that's exactly what happened. But they will stand. So what we're doing is setting us up for questions that we try to avoid so that we can protect the services that we give to our students. And it's, it's not a big deal until it's a big deal and, you know, the budget doesn't.
Yeah. Okay. Is that answer a raised question?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I think we're ready for a roll call now.
To table it, right?
Yes.
That's where we're at. I have Mrs. Wildwood making a motion. Mrs. Fisher, seconding it. Yes, okay. Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Wildwood?
Yes.
I swear, wait a minute. I didn't see that in there. I am so shocked. I would have not, I would warn you guys.
Okay. So we don't have any old business. So the next business is our smart goal.
Oh, I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not.
You can have more.
So the next one is the S R two grant application. So Mr. Richard is looking for support of allowing funding for the found social emotional supports required by the grant. And the first one is adjustment counselor to be shared between both buildings and benefits and salary tolling, tolling approximately ninety thousand dollars. And then support of both LES and L and HS summer school stipends totaling approximately, approximately a hundred thousand dollars over the course of two summers to mitigate learning loss. On the fund, additional software program to assist the learning loss and accelerate learn. So that will be what the money we need to use for the S R two grant.
Okay. Do we need to have a motion for each one of us?
I'm trying to figure out a few things that are going on. So is he asking us to accept the grant?
Yes.
Okay, so that's one motion.
Yeah.
And then school committee is approve all new positions?
Yes.
That's two.
Yeah.
Of stipends, we don't approve because we're approving the grant.
Got it.
If he has a line in the grant for stipends, we don't oversee that.
Okay.
He should post the stipend.
Yeah. Yeah. So we need to approve the grant. So that's the first one.
And make a motion, we approve the S R grant for FY twenty-two. S R two for FY twenty-two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, now we need what?
Twenty-two and twenty-three. It's two year.
Okay. Is, is it a rollover or a re, like?
It's.
Okay. I stand corrected FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three.
I'll second that one.
Can we have a roll call?
Oh, Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Wildwood?
Yes.
And I think second, we need a motion to approve the school adjustment counselor position for two years, correct?
So I make a motion that we approve the shared adjustment counselor with Lee Elementary and Lee Middle and High School for FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Another roll call.
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Wildwood?
Yeah.
And apparently Randy's got more.
All right. So twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two capital project expenditures. Also at the town of Lee's annual, annual meeting, a hundred thousand was appropriated to our school district for capital. The capital project is recommended by Mr. Richard. And that is one, repair all concrete curving and sidewalk on both sides. Current bid of fifty-seven thousand, re-gasket the boilers at LES, current bid of approximately ten thousand. Repair and or replace the garage doors on the barn, current bid of approximately fifteen thousand. And repair, repair the failing cosmetic structure at LES entryway, current bid of approximately ten thousand dollars. So the, the total expense again was a hundred thousand dollars. So we need to.
One or do we have to do each one?
So this is just new for me because I haven't seen it yet. So usually we get a list. And then we decide what the money is being spent on and they give us all their wish list. So I find that they've already picked it. So I make a motion that we accept the capital expenditure.
That project expenditure.
Offering, idea? A list?
It's, it's a, it's a capital project expenditure. That's it. That's, that's a hundred thousand dollars is the capital project expenditure.
Right, but we're actually approving. He doesn't get to pick what the hundred thousand dollars is spent on. We approve that.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm trying to get that listed. So I am, I make a motion, we accept the FY twenty-two capital expenditure list.
Yeah.
As presented by Superintendent Fisher.
Yeah.
I'll second. All you.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So discussion would be, next time I'd like us to have a list that we get to pick from. And we have input from, from, you know, we get to talk about that. We hear about the, the walkway. We hear about the door. And so that we, am I wrong? Do we always have a list and we chose from it?
I think it's, I'm trying to remember because we didn't have capital budget last year, if you remember.
Couple of years ago, we had a hundred and a hundred.
There were two, two and a half. Before that, there wasn't any.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I believe it did. And we actually, these were items that were on those lists from two years ago. And we're, we're maintaining that list as things pop up and adding to it. So these are items that were kind of next on the list from two years ago. So, but we do have the full list and there's many other items below it as well.
That would be an interesting, that would be a great subcommittee, like a capital project subcommittee. So we can plan budget wise because we get another hundred thousand next year. Or if we got fifty, it's this board that makes those decisions.
Well, while we're having this discussion, my assumption is that Superintendent Richard talked to staff, maintenance, yourself, LES.
Do you get to prioritize?
Yes, we, we, in a, in a meeting, we threw in priorities before your time. But yes, that's, that's where those kind of reordered the proposed list.
So then, then my next question is, I think we should all be very careful about procurement. So fifty-seven thousand triggers thirty B laws. The fifteen thousand also triggered something. So we don't have an M C P P O here.
I don't know what that means.
A Massachusetts certified procurement officer.
Okay.
So the town does. Now they have that on that side. Maybe they'll help us. And I just think Mr. Richard should probably be aware of that. So we don't break that law.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll get it automated for that. Sorry. I, money is what I know.
No, you're good. We have received multiple bids. No, you're good. We have received, we've done multiple bids and we are aware that the fifty seven is another threshold. Right.
And let's try and save it. Yeah.
Any any more discussion? Okay. Do we have a roll call? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Then it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We don't have any old business on our agenda. So the next thing that we have coming up is our uh smart hole. So I'm hoping. See my screen? Okay. Um so. I feel like it's like a month ago, maybe like three weeks ago, uh Andrea Wadsworth, myself, Kirk and Erin. Met to uh put the finishing touches on our smart hole for the uh twenty one, twenty two. Uh school year. And so. Um and so uh what we did was we took the work that had already been started. And we uh looked at the fact that we have quite a few new members sitting around our table. Uh and so what we thought would be helpful is to make sure that all of our members, and I will tell you as myself, I'm a fairly new member because I don't think I've been here for a few years. Um to make sure we have more informed participation um along the um the the table. Uh so our specific goal is to develop more informed participation among all of those fourteen members. Um and so uh. What we did was we sat and talked for, I think we were there for about two and a half hours and we talked about, uh it was really helpful to have um. Kirk there because Kirk, I think you've been to one meeting at that point. Um so it was really helpful to have somebody who was brand new to the committee who. Could give us sort of a, I got. Brought onto the committee and showed up a week later and came to the meeting and was sort of like, oh, this is what's expected of me. Um so it was really helpful to have to have sort of varying years of expertise. Then we had Andrea who's been on the committee for ten years now, yeah, something like that. Um and so we had varying years of expertise. And so it was really helpful to have all of us there to sort of give sort of our feelings about. What it has been like and what it feels like to be on the committee and how we can make it more manageable for everybody that's on the committee. So my job is going to be to sort of talk about the top part of it. And then I'm gonna let everybody else sort of talk about how we made the 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 more manageable benchmark goals. So. We we know that that it's measurable because we um are going to be using um the survey. Surveys. You guys got a lot of surveys. Andrea um Wadsworth sent out a whole bunch of survey links to you guys. Uh I think right after we met that she downloaded from uh M A S C.
I gotta give Glenn Kutcher, the executive director, sense of, I I didn't do anything.
Okay.
He told us to pick.
Um so we're gonna need to pick a a a survey. So you guys all have the survey. So maybe what would be helpful is between now and August meeting, add this to your list. You're gonna pick a whole bunch of committees that you're gonna be on and. You're gonna go look through the surveys and and you're gonna let me know which survey you think we should use. And I'm gonna, I'm doing a majority rules. We're gonna have a democracy, majority rules. Um and then we're gonna do a survey of ourselves to see how we feel uh we're doing. As a committee. Um and then uh and that's one of our benchmarks that's that we're going to use. Yeah.
That's right. So because we're. Three.
Yeah.
So how many, when we launch that survey, how many months are we doing? It's check on what we're doing.
I I think it'd be good from each of the perspectives, like what it feels like to be a month in. That's it will be a month and you guys will be three months in, you're a year and a half, like, yeah.
Yeah, he's not a year and Aaron's.
Be different perspective.
I think that'd be kind of cool. So you can see where where you're.
Yeah, I just, you know, what the conversation is about.
Yes, to get everybody's sort of perspective as to how they're feeling. Um and so we're gonna use the survey as sort of our baseline for everybody, if that makes sense to everybody. Um and it really is to help all the board members feel more knowledgeable and feel more comfortable participating in the in the meetings. Um so that we all feel like we're working as a team. Um and so um so we talked a lot about. Uh one of the things we talked a lot about was mentorship. And so I'm going, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick it over to you because this was actually your idea. So I'm gonna kick mentorship over to you.
All right, so um talk about the school committee mentor support program. Um and kind of what brought this forward to me was being so young on the committee. Um and then not really having a full grasp of what our responsibilities or where our job really is. Um it's, it'd be great to have a specific point person on the committee. You can contact me if you're about to ID or you're about to question off of. That might be kind of help us and help me uh understand what exactly we're doing and why we're doing. Um and so this would kind of be like an ongoing thing where you kind of have a few support buddy in the committee. So I guess let's go to the 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 action steps. So it's the school committee members support program. Uh there's an online uh ongoing deadline um that numerous members will receive a welcome email. Uh which we need to. Um you're assigned a mentor uh and a binder of materials prior to their first meeting. So basically, you don't have to show up at your first meeting blind. No idea what's going on, really. And you kind of have a little bit of that understanding and at least someone that you can talk to. Necessary resources are gonna uh create a point of contact mentor for each new member to reach out um through email with new questions. Or we'd be using our actual school um our public school email address to do this. Um thinking the thought is it's public record. It's, you know, we're kind of, you know, it's all right there in case anyone wants to pull it, we can. Um a binder of local materials to review such as uh large issues that we're facing. Uh or they're still lingering from the previous year and also the M A S C binder. Another resource be uh people outside or per person or people outside the board with experience on school committees. Um. And then also the M A S C field director. Some potential challenges. Uh what would this relationship look like? Um could there be an unintended bias? Um does it influence where someone stands on an issue? So those are important things. And I think um. My thought on uh being a mentor is not so much to guide someone to think a certain way or to feel a certain way about a topic that we're discussing or working on. But just to provide that person the. Uh objective help that they need to form their own opinion to be a, you know, a a very successful uh member of this committee. Um potential support that we could use uh M A S C obviously. We can always ask for more tailored training uh in the field rep. Um we can find out if there's other local school committees that do or that have a similar um thing that they do, they do a a. Peer support program um and mentor training. The results, we are hoping that new members will feel better supported when they join the committee. Uh current members will feel more supported to participate, engage in being discussions in the liberal age.
Thanks, Kirk. So that's uh that's actually step and then I'm gonna let Andrea talk about the survey.
I I can't seem to find, but this, so there's surveys and it's really like a three sixty. So it's, you're looking back at your own, like, what do you understand? How do you feel about your committee? Um you know, what what can you improve? There there was five or six different ones that. He gave us. I like multiple choice ones personally, if I don't write essays, but um that's up to everyone else. We'll, you know, I'll, I'll, wherever I go with the majority. Uh it's important because you all have different perspectives. And if you haven't gone through charting the course. Um you probably are really at a disadvantage because. No one's told you why you're supposed to be here, right? And then even when you go through charting the course, it's been different when you've been in person, when you've been online. Um so there's those things. Yeah, I think it's a good tool for us to see where we're at.
Right. So the hope is that we would decide on the survey next month. That we would get the survey completed between the autumn and the evening. And that whoever the chair is after we start in the evening in August. Um would aggregate the. Data from the survey. Um because it would be anonymous. And then we would then have that uh data to.
We could almost tie it into like the retreat so that we can work together.
And we don't like fellowship type of thing.
Like a fellowship?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We can play golf.
Yeah. So this, so this is, this is what we came up with. So is there any other questions on?
I don't have a question, but I just have to say as a new member, I love it. I think it was a wonderful goal. Actually, the capitalists are, you know, going to be moving forward and the mentoring. Sounds amazing. So you know, I was on vacation. You guys did a wonderful job. Really did. You take you bring.
Yeah, I think I, you know, I I was distracted. Um that's a story for another day. But um you know, it does, it does have some of the smart holes that we worked on prior to this. So I, I appreciate it now. That that was my number one thing. So it was created in this more of a team by them. That was so that works out perfect. So I. I do it pretty quick, right? Be you go there and still there's a lot of stuff to learn. Still stuff I don't know. I haven't met my older one, but he has that one person. We go to, hey, I have questions. And. That's where it where. Yeah, I think I think it was a powerful. Reality is.
Well, we can get you out.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
You know, like we asked some of them. They're all, they're. Uh I would like to thank the group uh for helping to rephrase, does it influence where someone else stands on an issue? Because when we first looked at that, there was some real negative connotations about maybe one member, I'm just saying. Me uh would be able to influence people. And I would hope, I'm gonna say this publicly, that I am your resource, not influence. Because you have your own decisions to make. And that's why you sit. Uh I don't know anything. I don't research. It's not because I know more than others. It's just I like.
Okay, so I think our next steps would be to.
I'll make a motion to approve our smart.
Brenda, can I trouble you for another?
Yes, I did.
Sir Robin?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Fisher? Yes.
Yes. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Break up. Getting my goal.
Okay. All right, so next on our agenda is our next meeting, which is on August ten. Where you will all be showing up. Mine is Kirk.
I will not be there.
Mine is Kirk. With your list of subcommittees that you want to join. Uh so be prepared and ready. Uh other than that, I don't. Okay.
Just for the good of the order, there is a M A S C summer institute on Saturday. I know it's late, not just for everyone. It's free. And it's in Marlborough, eight. Up to twelve, and it talks about diversity and equity and how to do tax and fund. So any school committee member would like to go.
I'll be in the Western Mass meetings.
All right, any other, anything else, people? All right, so at this point, I will entertain a motion.
I made a motion to adjourn here.
So I know. Any discussion? All right, Brenda, can I trouble you for a?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, it is eight oh five and we are adjourned.